Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call our meeting to order. And before we get started, I want to try to keep Police Chief Mills in our prayers as he keeps on struggling. And also Liam Ashbury's wife, she's had some problems too. So if you would please stand for a page of allegiance. I'll pay him a favor. Please stand up. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our gracious and kind heaven, Father, Lord, we thank you for this day that you've given us. We thank you for your son who recognized this month, Lord. And we ask that you'll give us the understanding and the magnitude and the vision you recognize throughout the year, not just as we celebrate the birth of Jesus Christ. Lord, we ask that you'll be with this council meeting tonight. We ask that you'll be with the ones that can't be here tonight for various reasons. Lord, we ask that you'll watch over this government body, give them the wisdom and the courage to make the decisions that are in the best interest of not only your eyes, but in the community, Lord. We ask all this in your son's favor. Amen.
Okay, at this time we have special presentations and I ask for Representative Brown and Edwards to come forward and present their.
Good evening. I'm Justin Martin with Brown Embers. I'm in charge of the town audit. So I'd like to present the audit report to you all. But first I'd like to thank Todd, Leanne, and all of the rest of the town staff for doing such a good job and all their hard work that they put in towards making the audit a success. In your packet, I believe, they've included three things. One will be the audit of financial statements. The second is a management letter. This is your sort of best practices or recommendations that we note throughout our audit. And then finally is a letter to those charged with governance. It's the one copied that's on the front. This provides kind of a roadmap on how we reached the opinion that we reached in the financial statements. One thing I'd like to point out in that letter, there wasn't anything, no disagreements with management, nothing came to that, rose to that level. So if I can point out the financial statements, with the opinion, that is the first statement. And that's the main thing that we're providing. We had an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, and this is the highest level of insurance that we're able to provide. Looking through the financial statements, you can see they're comparative. Some of the differences, it was an increase in net position this year. Most of that's related to increasing assets. Most of those were capital assets. Most of those were federally funded or funded through other grants. Some of them were for the train station, Route 61 project, the theater property. And like I said, most of these were grant funded, so that helped increase net position. Looking through towards the back of the report, there are two letters. One is the internal control letter. This had similar findings as we had last year. And then in the back is the compliance section, and this has the single audit report. We noted no instances of non-compliance when testing for the single audit. The town, once again this year, would reach the threshold of $750,000, which required a single audit, which is, we have to look at a specific federal program, which is the highway maintenance project. All in all, everything was good. The town continues to work on financial reporting, doing a good job. Leanne stepped up and did a really good job this year, and this being her first full year in that position. Do you all have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? I'm out. See, it's all time. They look pretty standard, so.
Good job, Stan. Thanks. Definitely appreciate it. But be safe.
If you all have any questions, just listen.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Next on agenda, Don Gates, we're discussing the county fair.
Evening, everyone. I just want to try to keep you in touch with where we're at. Well, I guess I'd better let you know I'm the new president of the fair for next year. The first thing, three years ago, when I got first got involved with the fair, I was shocked when I found out that Tassle County has the longest continuous running county fair in the Commonwealth of Virginia. I had no idea we had that distinction. Our fair next year will be the week of, excuse me, July 17th to the 21st. We already have a signed contract to bring Cold Midway back next year. It's the same midway we had this year. Worked out real good. They had good equipment. They had clean equipment, and they're a Virginia-based company also. That was a plus. I'm happy to report the last two years, we have set records for the number of entries in our livestock, poultry, and arena events. Each year, that's increased. You know, that's really what the county fair started out as being, and we got caught up into everything else, which has its good and its bad points, but we're dealing with that. We made some changes last year. The biggest change we made, we changed the entrance of the arena from the side to the east end, where you would have a straight shot into the arena. That allows us the room to have truck pulls, tractor pulls, rodeos, bull riding. So it's really opened up some venues that we didn't have in the past. Marcus Gilbert, our outgoing president, did an excellent job. He put a lot of sweat equity into that project, and it's worked out real good for us so far. And we kind of started a thing where every day, we want to have family day, a family of the day, and, you know, just recognize them, give them some tickets for the rides, feed them that day. And just, we want to try to touch all parts of our county, from Oklahoma's all the way down to Richland. And we have a new webpage now. If you get a chance, just get on Tassle County Fair web. I think it's tasslecountyfair.com. We'll get you directions, how to get to our webpage. And we've got some plans for this coming year. I'm still working on the board, getting their approval and getting them excited about it as I am. Couple of things I would like to do is behind, on the lower end of the arena, which would be the west end, between there and Fuller Perry Hall, in that grassy area, I'd like to move all the rides for little children over to that section, put a fence around it at one gate, one way in, one way out, and benches inside there for parents to sit on while the kids ride. I've seen this the last two years at other fairs, and it seems to work real good. Takes a lot of pressure off of parents if you have more than one child, they're trying to keep up with. But we would have to move our, we could still keep some handicap parking in the area that has gravel directly beside Fuller Perry Hall. And then we'd have two other sections, one on the south side of the arena and another along the whole north side there, where we can park handicap vehicles that will be, you know, right on the road, they'll have easy access to get there. The only problem there that I think we may have to deal with is to ask people when they show up if the handicap person is with them. I watched every day for about a half hour last year. I saw a lot of use of that handicap section, and that's something we're going to try to address this year. But another thing that will come out of it, like I said, we're going to have one old-fashioned day. I'll talk about that in a minute. But that's going to free up more room on the big midway for adult and older people, older children and adult rides. I don't see why we wouldn't be able to get anywhere from 22 to 25 rides on that midway there. And, you know, like I said, the fair was founded on the old country things that we do, but they, today, you gotta have the glitz and the glamour to go with it, to draw the people in. We're going to discuss this. We'll be going to come into Virginia the 5th, 6th, and 7th of January for the state fair, state county fair convention there. And we want to, on the Sunday before the fair, on July 15th, we want to have an old-fashioned fair day. That's before all the rides and everything show up. We want to have a horseshoe tournament, you know, three-legged race, potato sack race, cornhole tournament, maybe pie eating contest, just the old games and stuff. And some new things too. Someone wanted to have, they called it a Barbie and Ken parade, which I thought was a great idea. And you have all the little kids, bring the battery repaired vehicles or pedal cars, and let them do a parade around the circle, around the midway, and have gospel singing, and just do a lot of the old things that we used to do before everything came along. And then another thing that we're real excited about that we're going to do, we're going to have a town of the day for every day at the fair. And the way I have it tentatively scheduled, Sunday will be Town of Oklahoma's Day, Tuesday will be Town of Bluefield, Virginia Day, Wednesday would be Town of Tassle Day, Thursday, Town of Cedar Grove, Friday, Town of Richland, and Saturday, we would combine the Sheriff's Department and the Board of Supervisors. And what we want to do is to recognize each of you. Believe it or not, we do realize the tough job you folks have, and I appreciate the job that you do. But we would like to extend an invitation to Tassle officially tonight on Wednesday of July the 18th, to be Town of Tassle Day, Tassle County Fair. Feel free to set up your canopy, if you want to bring a police car, a fire truck, rescue squad vehicle, the purpose of that, we want to honor you, all your first responders, and all the people who do all the things that we take for granted every day when we drive up and down the streets of Tassle. I've tried to adopt the saying, since I've taken over, that this is your Tassle County Fair, and that's what we want it to be. Like I said, we're showing good numbers in the basic items that our fair was started on. We want to continue that trend and keep working for the future to try to make it bigger and better. Do you all have any questions?
I'm glad you're with the leadership. I think that'll be a success. And again, thank you for your invitation. We are down on a lot, and I know the Park Department and the public works has helped a lot, and the police force has helped. We're excited. One thing we did notice, I did notice, it's a different day than our Main Street festival, so that's, that's added a plus for us this year too.
Yeah, we had that one horrible situation that year that put us in the bind, that you wouldn't realize how many, how few the number of midways are that you would like to have that are available when you want. Hopefully, we've got that problem worked out.
Anybody else have any questions?
Sounds exciting. Yes.
Exciting? Have a hot dog contest.
We could. Could.
I've got one question for you. Originally, been talking to Viola and Marcus for the next three consecutive years, it's going to be on the same weekend?
Yes.
So it did change?
Pardon?
It did change, it's not going to be the, or the, the 28th?
No, this year is the 17th through the 21st. Be the week before.
Okay.
I think Viola twisted some arms and was able to get a move, we had it scheduled.
I know my oldest, 25 years, she don't do that.
I found that was two things, two ways to do things. Her way to the wrong place, so I'm working with that. But we do thank you all, we appreciate everything you did for us.
Also, I want to thank you for, I know you're involved with the lighting, you know, the fairgrounds, and thank you for the efforts there too.
Thank you.
Okay, next, it's on the agenda is discussion of sports park and arena.
Oh, gosh, man, I can't see it.
So basically, what we have is small writing, it's kind of, it's a business plan for an aqua park. A frequent topic of discussion that we've had the past couple of meetings has been, how can we bring more people to the town of Tassle? How can we share what Tassle has to offer with people outside? I believe that an aqua park in the entire lake is the starting point for that. I think the center of it should be Parks and Rec. It brings people from all over, it comes to activities, which opens the door for them to come to restaurants, open restaurants, and can book. Basically, what it is, all you see are the budgets and, like I said, a business plan of putting inflatables, inflatable course towards the lake. The final page of this packet has what it would look like on the lake, which could also be added on to, separate things, it's just kind of a base layout. I've been talking with Travis Richards from Sportsman's Arena. We discussed the possibility, we met Friday. He took a look at the lake, loved it, and I really think this is something that's going to help put Tassle a little bit more on the map, bring more people in, and give a little bit more through the park, which I think we have a lot to offer. I think it's just a good starting point. And also, I've talked to dam safety inspectors, I've been cussing with just the dam safety inspectors. They approve. I'm waiting for written email confirming. I'm just waiting to hear back from Damian Fishers, but it shouldn't be an issue. I would like to give the fortune to Travis Richards. He can give you a better understanding of what's on here, and if you can't read, he can explain what certain things say. It is small writing, it's just kind of how it's printed out, and hopefully, it's something that we've considered getting. It could be implemented as soon as the summer of next year. Even talking to him, he said we could get this done by Christmas with what we have already. So I'll give it to Travis, he can kind of better explain everything that's on this paper.
Hey, good evening. Thank you guys for having me. I met Ben Friday for the first time, so I do apologize for the small writing. I tried to get that into a page for him, just as an email, and didn't realize I was coming here till yesterday?
Yesterday.
Yeah, yesterday. So, real quick background for me. I'm from Bristol. I bought Sportsman's Marina about 11 years ago, and I've ran a boat dealership previous to that, and that was actually one of the, was actually the youngest dealer principal for a boat dealership in the United States ever, for Mastercraft and a couple of others. But bought Sportsman's Marina, I've had it for 11 years. A friend of mine that actually used to work for a boat manufacturer company started selling this aqua park stuff, which was brand new about five years ago, and they started making these different inflatable slides and things like that. After he worked for them for a couple of years, he now lives in Mexico, and he's got a pretty good gig as the ships come in and out in, at one of the ports where he does an excursion thing, and he does about, he does a little over seven figures a year, three days a week, doing these things. So I thought surely we can do this on a smaller scale, just at the lake. So we implemented that like two years ago. It's hard to put a real number on what this really does. It's kind of like a restaurant out of arena. What does it really bring in? And I'm still, I'm still unable to put my finger on that. But my slips are full, and all my people are happy, and we've added this. We started out with a restaurant, did about $25,000 a year, seven years ago. The first year we put in the aqua park, it put us a little over $100,000 in gross sales. And then this past year, we did $180,000 in restaurant sales, and I contributed a lot of that to the aqua park. We also did around 55, I think it was like 56, five and some change of actual brochure seats through our aqua park. Now, we're open three days a week, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, 18 weeks a year, and that's it. So it's proven to be very successful on South Olston Lake. I know that talking to my rep now, he says municipalities that will allow things to happen like this, and it really comes down to somebody that's running the Parks and Rec Department that wants to screw with it. But if they want to do, if they want to do that, they've been very, very successful. I put this in, I'm not a very great computer guy, computer savvy guy, but we put this in as, as, running like June 1st through September 1st for you guys. I kind of leaned on Ben a little bit and asked, you know, how many pool people do you guys have, and things like that? And, you know, he conveyed to me that it was around 50 or 60 people, so I just plugged in 60 people. I've tried to figure everything into this from, I'm using the same pricing that I use at South Olston Lake, based on 60 people a day, taking into account 10% of the time for your weather, building a dock that you can actually get onto this. Ben, I've started out, won't maybe do a beach, you know, maybe doing like a hundred other park type thing. Our lake fluctuates 30 feet a year, so we're always chasing our tail on that. So we basically go off of a dock that's fixed, where some people sit and stuff, and I think that would be a great idea to do that, cost effective wise too, on your old's lake. So taking into consideration of everything, costs and everything, I kept it grounded at $100,000 bucks for everything, kind of turnkey, figuring in the insurance, staffing, the whole bit, very conservative numbers, still netting out about 15 grand a year. I believe that you can do that a lot of park with what you guys have. My biggest question, does anybody know how cold that water is in summer time? Really? So if it's real cold, then, you know, I don't know. But, well, I've been in there this summer. I took tires out of the lake, I jumped in there, it wasn't too bad. It wasn't anything different than the pool. I mean, as long as it winds. Well, I know that our water temperature, you know, it'll get in the 80s in June, that's when I get in. But, you know, kids really don't care. But I do think that would be a factor, anybody would know, you know, at least what that surface temperature would be, because it looks clean, looks awesome, but, you know, if it's 50 degrees, it may not work.
Let me ask you a question. Let me, I'm going to cut you off. You know, the idea, and you might find a bigger chance for the town than I, for growth and success, for economic development, and I'm right in. But I'm also real good at deflating ideas, if it's going to deflate it. The parking is a concern we've got. The lake is also a major fisher in the summertime, so there's no doubt in my mind that the other parking lot will not house this facility. It won't do it. And it's a lot of fishing, like South Olston, it's got what, 300 miles shoreline? We've got a 15 acre lake. So that's a concern that we have to, that we have to address. And I know we're talking to Don, he hadn't talked a lot with Ben, but there's an area that's north of the existing boat dock. If you travel up the path, you go through the little gate, you travel up that path, it's got an intention in it, where we could start a dock, we could build a dock, you know? And building a dock, the steps going down to the lake is a small task on that bank. It's got rock, and believe it or not, rock is actually a blessing for security reasons. Not a lot of anger you'd have to do there, just a lot of prilling, and we've got the cake filling. But the parking and the fishing, and the, biologically, I guess, but you're doing it on Olston, so I guess it's not a big concern at Olston?
No, it's all mobile. I mean, you take it out for the wear. I mean, you want to do that, it's a big investment.
Well, do you, do you rent, I mean, is it, is it a program where you become, like, we built, we built the rigid dock. Let's say we do that in-house, and we put the float dock in, it's something that can always be there, we can't lose there. We made it bad anyway. But when it comes to the facility, is that something that you do and rent out, or is it, how do you kind of?
I'm the dealer for this stuff, and I've sold it to other places that's done well. Nothing this magnitude, other than doing it for myself. So, I mean, I don't, I don't particularly want to come and run a facility two hours from where I'm at. I mean, it seems like you guys have the.
Do you rent? Do you rent stuff?
No, we just, I mean, I could, I could buy it and rent it. I mean, if we could come up with. No, we just, I mean, I could, I could buy and rent, you know, I mean, if we could come up with at least. I'm up for whatever. But, yeah, I'm up for whatever, you know. But, not hurt the fish, you know, it may hurt some little old man's feelings for being there. That fish is there by himself, you know, every other weekend or something. But, and I have a few of those, but, you know, progress, I mean, progress is progress. And, you know, I don't know how much, how much money the town's made on fishing turn around there lately. I'm guessing it's not a lot, because I haven't made any money on fishing turns lately.
I don't want to put whatever, hey, what?
So maybe you want to throw something in there for the, for the, for the fair, do a fishing turn. But I'm, I'm up for anything. I mean, I'm, 35% of my business is from rich lands and Tasswell. I mean, these are some great people out here. So.
Well, logistically, getting people from point A to point B is a concern, but maybe I'm making a bigger deal out of what it is. You know, we also have a concessions data on the Amber Cry, so I think we're, I think we've got a really good start. I'd like to catch up with you later on, maybe next week or right after the holidays. And let's try to secure a plan of how we can do this. I can't see those numbers, but you probably have it in there, but the expense of what you've got in your picture is what?
What's the hard cost of just that?
60 grand.
Alright, so, just keep this something for you.
Only way back to why you're fighting this hearing, we'll think about it. I, I like to entertain the idea of renting that, for me. It's going to be a horrible, for maybe as well as buying that, and then if it's successful.
Well, I mean, here, here's the thing, and I'll put it, and I'll put it in the business, like, I am sorry, that's so small. I mean, I can barely read on this ground, so. If, if I would only have printed out that small, I would have brought you to something else. The, you know, the Amber Cry is out over five years, it's less than $20,000 a year. And that stuff is, is built to last seven to 10 years in a saltwater environment. So it can be patched, you know, and this is some stuff that can, that can last you guys, you know, 12 years. My stuff, has anybody been to, has anybody been to Sportsman's or South Holston?
I have. So I'll tell you that.
So.
That's how you want to appear is, I kind of, how did you buy it this summer and gave your information to Todd? Because every weekend we were down there, it was packed with kids.
And Todd's right. I mean, the parking thing, let me, let me tell you what happens. This, this happened to me, okay? Parking is an issue. Parking's an issue to me anyway. Parking's an issue everywhere. I mean, you know, I mean, I'm in, I'm in the business of parking, you know, so. I like parking, you know, so, but the thing about it is, is this year, I bought a quarter acre land right up from the Marina for $80,000. Because I was held hostage by the person that owned it. Even, I mean, it, it's, the county appraisal on that was $24,000. What do you do? You know.
Well, we'll find a way. We can, you know, we can shut, we can find a way to do that. You know, whether it's shuttling, building a sidewalk, and, you know, prioritizing the project is up to the leaders that are up there. We got a lot on tape, guys, to know that. But, I like the idea.
But I, I think this is something that you can instantly get a return on. I mean, however you want to put your numbers in, is totally up to you guys. But for me.
So is your number, I can't read.
Okay.
Is your number 60 people a day, seven days a week, or just 60 people a day, three on Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays?
What, what I did is I put in 60, this actual format is for 60 people a day for seven days.
Seven days.
Okay, but the 60 people, I think it's low. My biggest day last year was 173 kids that we ran through a day.
And what are you charging them?
We're either $10, we're $10 an hour or $30 for a full day. And it's about 60/40 split. Most people are going to say, for 30 bucks, let's just spend the whole day. So.
Yeah, we keep them there too, because they can fish, they can go walk, they can.
Paddle boards, yes.
Yeah, I mean, and, 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 you know, Ben kind of was asking, and I, and I do know a little bit more about it, because I've spent the money and I've done it, you know, kayak rentals, paddleboard rentals, this and that, you know. And a lot of people think, and everybody in here including myself, would think, yeah, we probably rent more kayaks, which is not true. The fact is the stand-up paddleboards. That we're, and actually looking at that, we're at 88% stand-up paddles to 12% kayaks. So I've got, and, and we went from two stand-up paddleboards to arrive at 24 and our chi. So, and you know, a lot of that, you know, you do, we have Home Depot that comes up, we do some team building exercises, some stuff, and when we are closed, you know, it does turn into a, to a four to five day a week thing. Because, you know, you've got a birthday party of, you know, sending the kids, and then you've got, we do a Home Depot thing, we also do a Best Buy thing, and then there's also a county firm that we do, do their things every year, has a team building where they go, all the adults go down the slides and, you know. We're, we're a little bit, it's a little bit easier to be a bolt oriented stuff, you know, because we do serve alcohol. But, they always have a good time.
So you signed a waiver, obviously. And do you have, do you have lifeguard on there?
We don't. By sign of the waiver, it was, it was actually just a few hundred dollars more not to have an actual lifeguard. And we just chose to do that because it looks a little sketchy. So if mom's like, well, you know, I, I, what I don't want to happen is I don't want there to be lifeguards there. And I don't want Chris to drop off his whole crew and then he go out and leave and I don't have a parent. So part of that waiver is you're there. And that, yeah, lifeguards are required and all.
Do you provide them?
We do, we do, yeah.
Okay, I'll catch up with you this week or next week.
Okay. This is one of none of you guys have any questions?
I'm thinking about the money.
Alright, just a little bit. Alright, guys, thank you guys for your.
Say to Travis, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Alright, we'll move on. They are ready to approve the minutes of the workshop and the council meeting for November 14.
On move with the approval.
Second. Second, in addition to corrections, please.
Yeah, there's two corrections I think we need to make. On the request for two parking spaces from residents. Assistant Councilmember Murray does, does see how we can give two spaces for parking for a homeowner. And it says, he said, he, we do. I don't know what that, he, we do.
What I do, I just count the way I.
And down, and down below that, it says, Councilman Tector makes a motion. He made a motion.
Any additions or corrections? Will you amend your motion to? If not, call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next on Jim, the financial report, again.
Okay, so Justin Wood Brown Edwards, who just presented our audit, so the audit's complete. It's done for another year. Very excited about that. We can move on to something else for a little while. Taxes in your packet, there was a sheet that said, kind of, what was billed, what was paid, what was owed. I feel that, I mean, I think we did pretty good. Obviously, we didn't collect everything, but we do have some other ways to kind of help increase collections a little bit that we're going to be doing. Second notices will probably go out in January, so we'll be looking to that. Kind of the, the mindset and that that I had, if you get on that before people start getting their income taxes, maybe they'll kind of pay us before they pay anybody else with it. Do you have any questions?
Is that pretty much normal as far as the percentage of collections? Is this up or down?
For this time of the year, it's, it's about right there.
How well is your arrangement with tax worked out?
We have had two tax sales up at the courthouse.
Referring to taxes, TACAs.
Yes, TACAs. We've had two tax sales up at the courthouse. We started using them back in, I want to say it was 2013, may have been the first year that I submitted. So, I mean, it's taken us a little while to get there, but we have actually got properties that were just, I mean, for, I'm just going to call them deadbeat accounts. We weren't getting any money on them. So now, we've got new owners that will pay taxes on them. So, they kind of cleared up the old and now they can start paying and get them back on our books.
Good job, Bryce.
You'd say it's positive as far as you're seeing for the numbers that you.
I think it's positive. I mean, if nothing else, it gets those accounts back active. And, I mean, that's got to be good.
Guess that is, John, obviously, our members.
Then, is that the company that we have collecting the passengers, do we still get sick from them?
That's, that's what he's talking about, yeah.
Is there any motion to approve the financial second sales percentage?
So moved.
They have a second?
Second.
Any corrections? If not, call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next is town managers update on ongoing projects.
Okay, if you look in your, your packet, had a chance to look at it, we've had an opportunity to pick up several grants. One of them we're working on is for the parking deck. And as you can see from DHCD, we've got a CDBG grant of $30,000. It's got potential for up to $700,000. So we're, we'll be running that, matter of fact, we're just waiting on approval from DHCD for the, for the word in of that. We've also got a couple of other projects outside of that that we're working on. One of them was the Recreation Committee, it was just formed about a month and a half ago. And I'll be bringing more information to council in time about that, but that's a minute. Route 61, we got the final invoice last week for Cleco. And I think it was around $150,000, is that right, Lynn?
I say $158,000.
And, so we'll owe 50% of that. We'll pay 100% of it, we got reimbursed at 50%. So, did you read that either? So anyway, so, by the way, that was a $900,000 bond that we will be obviously paying off and refinancing. Probably about 300 that we need to look at, maybe less than that, so. Have a little bit more money in there. I found out unofficially today. Keep in mind unofficial is a key word, the assessment's bad across county, they're on about 10%. It's like you take two steps forward and one back to pick up revenue and be called in and just lost. But anyway, I don't have anything else to add to it.
Next on Jim is the committee conference, I say it's planning commission, just from work.
Planning commission met most Monday last week. We discussed mobile home ordinances and discussed animal and foul ordinance. We read the ordinance last week, I mean, last month, first time. But we will have to redo it, so it will be read again for the first time this month. And we discussed spot zip code again. Please refer to the Cherry Street as being the North Texas Zip Code. The post office is not allowed to change it. The Labor Board of the post office, more like they're. Sir, there on Cherry Street, couple people across the street. Two, three, one, you're the top, you're the back, it's Church of St. North Texas. I tried, but didn't do it.
Mayor, one thing I will note from the planning commission sort of beyond the council's minds in the probably upcoming months. One of the things that, in addition to what Councilmember Murray mentioned about the mobile homes, one of the things they've asked me to look into is not only dealing with specific deal zoning with mobile homes, but also the possibility of eliminating cumulative zoning that we have in our, in our, in our current ordinance. So I'll be presenting possible drafts for just detailing specific provisions in the R3 and mobile home application, as well as looking at a revision of our entire zoning ordinance to bring to council concerning the elimination of cumulative zoning. So, that's something that'll be on your own plate probably sometime after the first thing.
Anything else? It's not what you've been busy. Next on Jim is the planning depot debate.
A renovation contract was awarded to Building Specialists Incorporated in November. My understanding is the works to begin soon. Todd may have more information about it.
Sure. Their, their start date is probably February the 2nd. Between now and the 2nd, Donny's got all his plumbers, HVAC, electrical in there working. If you recall, till last meeting, we voted to do that in half, so he's working in there right now. I'm also waiting on a response back from an email to Griffith's office to have some type of groundbreaking ceremony. Odds are that email joins probably 400 a day, so I'll be going more aggressive this time of the year. It's all federal funds, so it would be a huge bust to make a deal to get Griffith to use and Warner also.
If I could, Don, I'd also like to share from the Historical Society that Tasswell now has a webcam. And if you have not tuned it in, you might want to check that out. You can go to the tasswellhistory.org, that's the Tasswell County Historical website, Tasswell County Historical Society website. And it's the first item on there. I think, in fact, I've got it open right now on my smartphone to watch the traffic going up and down the street. You can do it anywhere you have access to internet, anytime you want to. It's on there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And we can thank the Historical Society for taking the lead and doing that. So if you help them, they help us. 1,838 people have viewed the webcam since it's been online for two days?
Yes.
Two days. 1,838 views. And just a few minutes ago, we checked it, there were eight people watching at that moment.
Somebody just didn't come to a complete stop up here. Can you go get them?
Terry, you can go out standing outside in front of the wave over there.
But if there's a crash right there, you're going to have a camera watching. I'm not kidding. Come to a complete stop, I just wanted to. We've got license plates.
Thank you, Derek. Congratulations, Terry. Next on Jim is our chief of police confirmation.
Okay, as you all know, for the last several months, I have been trying to do the best I can do with due diligence, and there's no question we made a right decision. In your charter, you have in section 3-92, and I won't read that whole paragraph, but I will read one sentence in. Since the chief of police so appointed by the town manager and confirmed by the council shall have the power to discipline his subordinates and with the approval of the town manager, discharge subordinates for just cause. So, I'm here tonight to let you know and confirm to you the hiring of Chief Dave Mills, who the mayor mentioned earlier. Unfortunately, since the day before Thanksgiving, he has been in the hospital at UVA and was diagnosed with some problems. I would mention.
and was diagnosed with some problems, I will mention what they are, I'll let him tell that story and do time, and do, keep him in, in your prayers. Brought a lot of excitement to the department, um, council, I want to let you know, um, we've got some of the best of the best in uniform over there now. Uh, and some of the other local areas around us, uh, don't have it anymore, but, uh, we're real tickled about that. Any questions for council? Okay.
Okay, sorry. Next, that's the, uh, date on the Barnes apartment.
As council's probably seen every time that I've communicated with either Frank or Jeff Barnes, Todd follows up with some snide remark about me staying in touch with them, uh, but I did have a real good conversation with Frank, um, last week, or actually about ten days ago, that preceded the last email, um, it is progressing, he and Jeff have been definitely talking, and definitely very much in favor of working out some arrangement with the town, they're just took, uh, taking their time about getting the proposal back to us concerning some possible modification, uh, where we initially, and Todd initially discussed with him about the location of the trail, that being where, uh, the former Christian school was located, the McCall property, the Cykers property, instead of running in front of that, going behind that along the Barnes property line, was one thing that Frank had discussed with me, and a few other issues about some of the other fence lines. Other than that, I'm hoping to have something back from them in the next couple of weeks, if not, you may see another email going back to Frank and Jeff, and I expect to hear something back from them, uh, but it is very positive, and I'm hoping that we'll have something moving toward getting a finalized agreement with them before the end of the year. Any questions about?
Okay, uh, we go on to the business, the first reading of the revised animal foul ordinance.
So I'm trying to, the council, is this your camera? We went, last time, we were here, the last meeting, uh, where I went through the lovely reading of this ordinance, it's always good Latin that I have to get through, and the planning commission, then after we had the first reading, uh, reflected back that there probably needed to be some type of a restriction in dealing with, uh, historical designated areas in terms of our historic district, so what I was thinking, uh, basically commissioned to change, uh, from the ordinance that was read for the first time last month, uh, were changes specifically to section four dash five subsection, um, was under, I'm trying to remember where I had it.
Uh, D three.
Well, D three was the one, I'm in the old one, I'm sorry. Now, it actually goes back on the first page, uh, actually in subsection B, under prohibited use, I have added the language, and the first sentence, subject to certain restrictions or prohibitions set forth herein, that's the one first reference to that, and then, as the mayor pointed out, under D three, then I've added, uh, the keeping and or raising of domestic fowl shall be prohibited at any residence located within a historic district as identified pursuant to Division eleven, chapter twenty-three of the code of the town of Tasle, and what that references, that specific Division eleven, is our historical designation criteria that's set in our zoning code, so I didn't get any more specific than that, because I felt like that was gonna be sufficient enough, that if there was any type of, a specific request in an area that's shown on that map, referred to under that Division eleven, that that would be sufficient to cover what the planning commission had recommended to go forward to council with provision. Other than that, I've read it for the first time, it's exactly the same, with the changes for subsection B, excuse me, and subsection D three.
So we can just finish with the reading, second time then?
No, you'll have to read it second, but this was the first read at the second time, but you'll make that call next month.
I mean, we don't have to read it all, I mean, you do.
I think given the fact that I've basically said the entire section is intact, but for those two changes, and that would suffice for purposes of our ordinance. If anyone have any questions, given the fact that it's, it's changed, since Jim is the only member of our audience who's here. But that's extended, that lady's.
Uh, next on Jim is the, uh, street pipe requests behind the Painted Peak.
Okay, I think each one of you had a chance to read the email in there, and I was requested, uh, to just go and do parking for right now, while they collectively have an opportunity to look at options, uh, there was a request in, in the, uh, to look at three poles that join property, uh, for potential lighting, I do want to clarify, if you look at that pole, it's got one on it.
This is on the hospital, right?
Yeah, this is behind the brewery, uh, but there was a request to consider putting streetlights on at least two additional poles, and maybe three, I can't remember what the email was, and actually turn them away from the street on the parking side, um.
And also lighting on the stairway coming up from the parking?
Well, actually, his email, one, another one of the other elected officials thought that, but that email is referring to the parking lot.
Behind.
Behind.
Right, but we also were looking at it.
We are gonna put lighting in, um, we are gonna put lighting on the trail going down to the lower parking lot, uh, we're not gonna do a, a real elaborate, it kinda like you would buy at a parking store, just go to the ground, solar type deal. Um, there's also a telephone pole in that lower block.
Yeah, thank you.
That's totally separate.
So you need us, you need approval for us for you to do this?
If you wanna do it, yes, sir, I do.
I don't understand, I just, I own a laundromat down there in the town for forty years, I had a parking lot that was dark. I contracted with Appalachian Power for the night, dusted on light up, I paid the bill. I have a business up on nineteen four sixty, I had two dusted on lights, which belonged to Appalachian Power, I paid the bill. I don't understand why the town would have to pay the bill to keep one section of his building lit up. I think, to get business to come to the town is great, but when do we stop? I think, I don't know, Chris, do you have any lights on your lot out there?
No. I mean, the streetlights?
Huh?
Streetlights.
Yeah, but I mean, you don't have any on your?
No.
How about you, Lynn?
I've got one extra that I had AEP put out there.
You pay the bill?
My dad had the green house in the same area, and he had a dusted on, he paid the bill.
I think that's the way it should be. I, I think we've, we've been pretty good to him so far.
I just read the motion, I did a lot, and move on.
Can I make the motion that we do not put them up?
Wait, wait, wait.
We'll just make the motion.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on. Uh, we move on to the adopt the policy for recognizing retirees.
See, we've been from five, one, two, three, four, and two hour parking discussions.
Could drop that, sorry, man. Um, since I've been here anyway, we've recognized, we had a number of employees that retired after working for the town for a long time, when I first started, picked up another incentive, since then, I've, uh, I've lost a number of employees along the way, and I'll continue to lose them, but there's always a question about how, and what level of recognition that we should recognize our retirees, and this is just something that we came up with, uh, Robin actually came up with it, I kinda like it to recognize them at Christmas dinner, that way we don't have to have a special, special dinner, and the incentive would be, uh, as you see, it's less than five years of service, uh, if they retire, keep in mind the keyboard is retire with the town. Not just Christmas, you know, and not get another job doing, they go retire fifty dollar Visa card, more than five and less than ten, a hundred dollars, more than ten years, and less than fifteen, a hundred and fifty dollars, over fifteen years, we give them an engraved watch, like we did the others, so I'd just like the council to recognize and look at it, and vote on it, and make any recommendations or changes you'd like to do.
If you're comfortable with that, then I'll make a motion that we accept that.
It's very conservative for somebody that puts in fifteen years of service.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, you're now, call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Hey, if there's anything else we call for, council, will, will, is anybody for a pro-?
Yes, sir. Late too early, go on.
Oh, here we go, executive session. Just remind, before we, uh, have our first word executive session, the town employee unit is Thursday night at six thirty, at the VIP rooms.
Six thirty? Correct.
All right, then, your motion to go to executive session, all consultation with legal counsel.
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Also liked it, like Chris earlier. Until the exact decision.